But now we are.
All right. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Economic Development Working Group. The first item is to elect a chair for the year 2122. Have we had any nominations or has anybody got any nominations now? Anybody willing to do it? Paul, perhaps you can advise us, does it, can it be anybody?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we're not making financial decisions on behalf of the council, so anybody could, could be chair, anybody in the room. And if, if nobody wants to chair for the year, it would be possible just to elect a chair for tonight's meeting. That would be the other option.
What about Mary?
She's on mute and can't answer.
Off mute now. I'm not sure whether I would be capable of doing that. I propose Margaret actually, if we were doing it meeting by meeting.
I can just about make you out.
You're very quiet, Mary.
Sorry, I was trying to get my volume up because it was bad last time. I managed to sort it last time, but I don't seem to have managed this time. Let me see if I can do one other thing.
councillor White.
I think I heard Mary say that she, she proposed you, Margaret. And if that was the case, I wonder, as this may be a one-off meeting, would you be happy to continue chairing this meeting?
I guess that would make sense, wouldn't it? And then we can review it depending on the outcome of the decision later on.
So I'd be happy to second Mary's recommendation if you're happy with that.
Those in favour?
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Congratulations, Margaret.
Thank you very much. What about a vice chair? Any, would Mary be willing to be vice chair?
I will for tonight, if you can hear me.
Hear you a little bit better now, Mary.
I'm shouting.
Okay. Are those in favour, oh, do we have a seconder? Oh, Howard will second. Those in favour? Unless there are any other nominations?
That's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. And do we have any apologies for absence?
We do from Robyn Statchbury.
I'm councillor Schaefer and Joe Watson from Dantieland Booty.
Okay, thank you. And declarations of interest? Perhaps people, if they haven't got any now, if something does come up, they can declare the interest later on. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting. Those who were present at the last meeting, have you checked that they were an accurate record? Because I wasn't at the meeting. Now, I did notice about the date of the meeting and I emailed Nina. So which was correct? What's on the agenda or what's on the actual minutes?
So it's February 2021, not February 2020.
Okay.
So I don't have the minutes in front of me. I think the minutes.
Said 2020.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be changed. Yeah. Mary.
My comment was that the wrong minutes that I was looking at. I have found minutes. Comments on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. There was, there was, I could hear a child's voice. I don't know where it was coming from. Can you say it again, Mary, please?
Yes, I was saying that I had found the wrong, it was the wrong minutes I had on the agenda. I found the correct ones and I do have some comments on them.
Right. Would you like to make those comments?
Right. I need to swap screens in a second. Right, for the Thursday, the 11th of February 2021. We first of all had the discussion under supporting businesses to bounce back. The comment was made about discussing wandering minstrel to attract shoppers to different areas of the town. It seemed to be well received at the meeting, but there was no action and I don't think anything's been done about it or has there, is my question.
Thank you. Can anybody respond on that?
I, Emma might say more than I will. I guess the answer is that Emma's looked at all the options for summer entertainment and we've come up with what was available. So it may have been considered, but it's, I don't think that's actually on the list at the moment. Is that fair, Emma?
Yeah, we did actually book a one-man band that was going to travel around the town. But when we pushed back the dates of the street entertainment, he had to cancel unfortunately because he couldn't rearrange. So.
Okay, thank you. My next comment, which I've seen to have lost my highlights was. Yes, under the Town Centre Design Working Group, it was agreed at the meeting to seek to establish a small working group. And is there an update on what happened there? Has the working group been set up?
Can anybody respond to that?
So I think, yeah, Warren.
I'm assuming this is related to the community board's proposals to look at the town centre and see how it can improve certain aspects of the pedestrian areas and any improvements that could be done on the short term and long term. I actually had a meeting yesterday with the regeneration team at Aylesbury. Because I was a little bit annoyed that it all went very quiet during the election and post-election. So I've kick-started a few, a few of the actions that we had back in March. So hopefully we can crack on with this within the next few weeks. But I'm waiting for the officers to respond formally after my meeting yesterday.
Okay, so we're, we're getting feedback from the minutes as opposed to approving them. Are those who were present happy to approve the minutes? Can you raise your hand if you're happy to approve them? Those who were there. Right, anybody not think we should approve the minutes? Who was there? So I think they're approved in that case.
That's two to zero, so that's approved.
Thank you. And the action list. The first oh addition, the contact additional local business owners to join the working group.
So I did have some suggestions. I haven't done that, given the report that's later on in the agenda. I thought we need to resolve the future of the group first, rather than invite more people on a group and then move them around again. That seemed to be the best way of doing it.
Yeah. Makes sense. So we'll come back to that at the end. And the Bart, the ideas for, you know, getting a discount if you arrived on Bart. Has anything happened with that? Or we've got? Warren, you've got something?
I should, I should declare an interest that I, I chair the Bart community bus. So we've just restarted running Bart. So some of the work that we had anticipated for the summer hasn't yet happened. We're now settling down into a bit of a what's the word I'm looking for? Well, now there is some clarity on sort of the, the opening, opening up after lockdown. We'll hopefully can restart those discussions and see how we can support traders in town with shopping services into the town centre. We did run some pilots back at Christmas, but unfortunately our clientele were just too nervous to be using the bus. So we didn't actually get any paid customers in that, that weekend trial. So hopefully we can restart that and get more interest.
Okay, thank you. And AVD, well, it was ABDC funding, presumably that's Buckinghamshire Council funding now.
Yeah, I honestly can't remember the detail on that. I don't remember it being an issue though. I'll have to track that back and check.
Can I just interject there? Is that the, is that the remnants of the, the town centre grant that Theresa Lane was?
I think, I think so.
Because obviously we might want to follow that up with the new BC world, that it doesn't disappear if that's still, still something that's available.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing that's ongoing is the BNDP Design and Style Guide.
Which is going to be discussed by the neighbourhood plan subgroup when that meets.
Okay. And then Bucks Floor.
Emma, do you know if Bucks Floor's been linked to Discover Buckingham?
In what way?
The suggestion.
It's linked from the website. Yeah, you can go on to Discover Buckingham on the homepage and you can, and it's linked to download it, yeah. If that's what you mean.
I think so. Well, yeah, it's, to be honest, it's moved on a lot since February. And so they are definitely linked through, and it's linked through social media.
Excellent. So there is a positive. So that's the action list. The Town Centre Management Update. Emma, you've got a verbal report for us?
Yeah, just a quick update. The main thing we've been working on is the raffle, which is going really, really well. And which was done by funding from the community board, which was meant to happen at Christmas. It's now happening now. And we've got some amazing prizes and we've got a lot of people entered into the raffle and I'm really impressed with it. It's been really, really good. And just carrying on with a health questionnaire, which is still quite difficult to get people to fill out, but we're moving on slowly with that. And we've got the town centre entertainment starting this Saturday. So that's another plus point. And just carry on with social media. To try and draw people into the town, basically.
Thank you. Mary.
Hope you can hear me. Yes, Emma, it's good that the raffle is going well. But one of the main objectives for running it was to actually bring more people to shops in Buckingham. For example, Well Street and various other places around the town. So although it's good that there's a lot of people entering the raffle from a, a prize point of view. Has it achieved an objective to get a spread of business around the town? Have you been able to get any feedback yet from anybody to say that business has increased? Because the only people I've spoken to is saying they don't notice a difference.
Um, I haven't asked any feedback about it yet, no. I hope it's made a difference, but it could just be the original existing customers entering. But I, I don't know how else you would do it. We've done a lot of advertising. It's been in the paper. It's been on social media. It's, so.
Yeah, and I think once it's finished, we'll go around businesses and get their feedback at the end. Obviously midway through is quite tricky. But we will get feedback from businesses at the end and then see if that's a good thing to do again or not. If businesses' feedback is that it didn't achieve very much, then we'll think of something else next time.
Okay, Warren.
Thanks. I was just following up Mary's point. How far afield have we advertised it? Is it, is it appearing on Facebook pages in Stony Stratford or Winslow or Toaster, that sort of thing? So we're actually encouraging people to come into Buckingham?
I've been sharing it onto various pages. I can share it onto more further afield, mostly just the Buckingham ones, to be honest. So I can share it further afield.
Yeah, because I think picking up Mary's point, this is about trying to encourage people to come into Buckingham to make sure that they use our local shops. Rather than, so if you're enticed to, if you live between Bister or Buckingham, what's going to tempt you into Buckingham? I suppose is, was kind of the idea of this project, I thought.
Yeah.
Mary.
With, with Warren's point, but it's also trying to encourage the locals to shop in Buckingham rather than going outside. So it's a two-way thing as well. So it's, it's hitting local pages as well as the further away pages, which is important.
Thank you. Anything else on, on the Town Centre Management Update? No, thank you, Emma, for that. And you're, you're on the next one. Oh, Warren.
So just a quick one, because we fell, fell in the pre, in the pre-unitary council of not displaying the support of the funder behind this. And I noticed that the graphics didn't have any reference to Buckinghamshire Council Community Board.
I have to mention it in the text of the, the posts.
Right.
I can put a logo on there as well, if you like.
Well, normally we've had the logos just to say who's supporting this, because we're just nice to, you know, recognise where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I think we've always seen that as important, haven't we?
Because I know that we did fall foul of that before, so I'd hate for that to be an issue with Aylesbury.
Yeah. So item eight, Discover Buckingham Website Update.
Yeah, it's taken along nicely. We've got, I've just got some figures from the last 30 days because I don't want to go too far back. So in the last 30 days, we've had 1,000 unique visitors, 3.1,000 page views. We've got an average of about 30 visits a day, which is quite good. And about 50% of people that are visiting are from mobile viewers. And we're getting more and more people from different countries. I think as, as lockdown lifted, we are getting more outside the UK people looking. And most people found it by a search engine and we don't have very many referrals at all. Only 3.1% of the people that came to the website is by referral. So that's something I need to work on. And the shop page is the most viewed, closely followed by the, the dining one. So people obviously like to know what shops are about. And we have quite a few new blogs on there. We've had a new blog from Lace Makers Cottage, which is an accommodation place in Buckingham, which went down quite well. And other than that, it's just keeping it up to date and adding things when I can to it.
Any questions? Howard.
I think we can make more use of putting links on other people's websites, such as the Twinning, even a U3A and other organisations that bring you back into the Buckingham one.
Yeah, the referral is the worst rate. So that is a good point. I, something I've noticed recently that we're not getting very, very many referrals.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Emma. And number nine, bounce back projects, a verbal report from the town clerk.
Thank you, from the town clerk with the help of Emma as I go through. So we've had got three bounce back schemes. So these are funded through the underspend from events last year. So Town Central Events Committees approved them. They've, we've brought in additional funding for all of them. So we've used £10,000 of town council money. The Otter Trail, which you would have seen advertised, the otters are now in place as of today, being launched tomorrow.
Yeah.
They look amazing. I think it's a brilliant project. We've brought in another £1,000 plus of sponsorship money. So organisations have sponsored specific otters and that money's gone on marketing and the launch event and various things, just and the map, so the artwork around the otters to make it a much better project. So that's really good story. I think that'll be really popular over the summer. And it's gone on Bucks Floor as a route that's on Bucks Floor, which has taken a bit of office of time to make it work. But hopefully through the summer, a lot of people will use that and we'll keep promoting that through the summer. The Saturday Entertainment, as Emma's already said, Emma's booked. We had to delay the start because of COVID. But we've had an additional £500 from the community board, that all through the community board fund for specifically for street performance in high streets. And that's all ready to go as of this Saturday, Emma?
Yeah.
What's this Saturday?
It's actually part of the Bucks Culture Open Weekend. We've got a storyteller. Unfortunately, it's going to, well, it looks like it's going to rain on the first Saturday. So I hope that doesn't dampen it too much.
Hopefully there'll be a break in the showers at just the right point. And the other project is Action for Youth Running Summer Activities. So last summer, we funded Action for Youth to run activities mostly in the parks for young people. So we're looking, we were looking to do something similar this summer. After we'd broadly agreed the scope of the work with Action for Youth, they applied to Buckinghamshire Council's Health Action Fund, which is targeted at young people in receipt of free school meals through the summer. And they were successful in that bid. I'm talking to them, I don't think they would have applied for Buckingham. They're doing it in a couple of other places in the county. They don't think they would apply for Buckingham if they weren't already with, working with us on the scheme we'd funded. So it's worked really well. The two things have gone together. They've combined the two programmes. We know where our money's going and Buckinghamshire Council's money is going. But obviously for young people from the town, it means there's a bigger mass, but it's one organisation doing the stuff that will be well promoted. Buckinghamshire Council's funding is aimed at a specific group of people, whereas ours is for young people generally. So that's given them more flexibility in how they'll deliver the scheme through the summer. So that I think is another really good story of partnership working. Obviously, bounce back, this is one, one-off money. So we won't necessarily be doing these things next year and let's be fine money from somewhere else.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? No? Well, thank you. We look forward to all of those projects reaching fruition and hopefully they'll be well supported. And the rain will be, or the weather will be kind to us. The next agenda item is the role of the EDWG and we've got a written report from the town clerk.
So if I may, Chair, so essentially I'm asking the question is, do we need the group to carry on or should we put it on hold for 12 months? Given the developing role of the Community Board's Economic Development Action Group, the Warren Chairs, and given the role of the Town Council's Town Central Events Group, which already said funds the bounce back projects and other related things for the town centre. And Emma reports through the Town Centre and Events Committee. Are we at risk of inviting the same businesses and partners to this group and the Community Board Action Group? And just talking about the same things? I realise that every, the groups are slightly different in their remits. And I'm really happy to support a meeting if, if members think it's appropriate and helpful. But obviously there's no point carrying on if everybody's actually sat there thinking we could be doing this a better way somewhere else.
Thank you. Howard.
Well, one of the tricky things is that I should declare an interest, I should, Warren and Ade, because we're all on the community board. If we, if we do that, then there will, can't be any discussion. So I think it's up to you to give us exemption.
Well, I suppose Mary could, oh, actually, and Margaret could agree exemption. I mean, in terms of declarations of interest, there are areas where it's accepted, like with setting the precept, everybody pays the council tax, but it's accepted that councillors can vote and discuss that because it affects everybody. I would argue it's the same point, to be honest, if members are happy with that.
Warren.
Warren, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, well, I certainly would make note of my, I don't know if there's really an interest as such, but just that, obviously I, I do chair the Economy Action Group and the Community Board. So I want to, I don't want to steer the, the town councils economic group one way or another. But I think the clerk makes the point that there is a risk of duplicating some conversations where there are committees already in the town council structure that already deal with some of these topics directly, particularly when it comes to money. So I'd be happy to support the, the town clerk's suggestion, but I wouldn't want that to feel like a any attempt to take it over. I think it's just a, what's the best place to have the wider strategic discussions and find the right partners to deliver stuff? And the town council's already picked up the baton on several projects already through the community board or through this working group. But as the community board does have access to quite significant funding for, for stuff, my, my, my personal feeling is it's probably the better place to have the wider discussions. Whereas the town council committees can maintain those tourism and events and the sort of hands-on, day-to-day stuff at a very local level. But that's just a really personal observation from myself.
Right, thank you. Howard.
I'm inclined to agree with Warren. I don't see the point in having meetings just for meetings' sake. I think it's important that the town centre ideas are still fed through to the community boards if we decide not to carry on with this group. So maybe we shouldn't discontinue it as such, but as Paul said, put it in abeyance, which means any ideas that Emma or anyone else has can be fed directly through to the community board via Paul.
Okay. Mary, do you like to say something?
Yes, I must admit, as being a member of one of the working groups for the community board, rather than the full community board, as well as this group, and taking a keen interest in what happens in some of the other council committee meetings. I did find it difficult to understand where the boundaries lie, but who did what. And it was very useful that Paul was also there because he could then be the conduit if things were discussed, but should be decided in another group. And he could follow them through. It, it did seem to be a lot of the things overlapped between, for example, the community board discussions and the town centre and events. Because it was for putting on events within the town centre and doing developments within the town centre. Where I rationalised it, that the community board dealt with the finance, but the committee would put the proposal to the community board for that finance. And then similarly with this group, there was an overlap, again, not only with the town centre committee, but with the community boards. So I would support the idea of putting it on hold. But with a proviso that there is a judgment made as to whether there is anything falling between the cracks or whether the other committees are covering everything that needs to be done. So the idea of, if anybody has ideas, we could feed ideas back in to say, okay, we could have maybe an extraordinary meeting of this committee to discuss a particular point that wasn't being raised in any of the other groups. And that, that might be the option so that it's not a regular meeting as such, but on a need basis.
Yeah, that sounds like a, a good idea. Is, is Ade?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'll also support councillor White's proposal. If we look at the terms of reference for this group, it's focused on economic development, which is the same remit of the Community Board's Action Group. So I think it'd be good for us to take a longer jauntment to enable what we've done there and then we can report back here.
Right, thank you. I think, so, so the comments seem to be supporting the recommendation, but I think we, we vote on that now. Can those in favour of the recommendation please raise their hand?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And I mean, I haven't been on this, this group, but thank you, everybody who's participated and for the work you've done. And we need to make sure that if anything is falling through the gaps, then we let probably the town clerk now, I would imagine. Or, or Warren as Chair of the Community Board be the other person. Warren, you had your hand up.
Indeed, I'm sure Paul already had this in hand, but just so we don't lose anyone, it'd be useful to make sure. I think all of our external stakeholders are already attending the community board in one way or another. But if we could formally write to them about the abeyance, that would be helpful. So they have an opportunity to inform the discussion at the Community Board Action Group.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And of course, you're already there.
And Mary, were you, did you indicate you wanted to say something?
I think you, you covered that by saying that we need to have a watching brief to make sure that things don't get left behind. have a watching brief to make sure that things don't get left behind and have a mechanism for giving feedback as well if we are going to suspend it.
Thank you. Well, that looks fairly conclusive, really. The next item is Chair's announcements. And I don't have any. Next meeting then, presumably that will change, because we've got October 21 down, so do we set another date now or leave that?
Shall we leave it for now? And when the Town Council reviews its Terms of Reference next May, at that point, I'd suggest it'd be appropriate to review this group and the Terms of Reference and maybe write to current members at that point for their views, that would seem to be the logical gateway.
Everyone happy with that? Okay, in which case, thank you everyone for your attendance this evening and I'm sure I'll see most of you in other places, not before too long. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Let's hope there's not too much rain on Saturday.